Wizard behind the doors ready.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to November sixth, special city council meeting, City of Marina. Thank you, everyone for being here. Call the order, please.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember McAdams.
Here.
Councilmember Biella. Mayor Pretend Vischer.
Here.
Mayor Delgado.
Here. All right, let's stand for a moment of silence and Lisa, could you lead us in the pledge, please, use the light? After a moment of silence.
By the state of America into the republic.
Okay. Dearly beloved, we are here for one reason and one reason only, and that's to consider authorizing the release of request proposals with proposed labor standards. And who will be leading us through this? HML Hernandez, our public works director. Thank you, HML.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before I, I just have something real quick to say before we open this up, but before I do, I have two short stories that are very relevant to the topic tonight. I don't know, 25 years or so ago, I was reading a book on Robert's Rules of Order to learn how to be a part of parliamentary procedures such as this meeting here. It's one of the most boring things I've read in my entire life, but but in the introduction, there was a quote and it just stuck with me all these years. And that is that rational people will always come to an agreement if they have enough facts. And so the two keys are rational, which is something you don't see at the state and federal level. And the other thing is just keep gathering facts until we reach an agreement. The other story, when I was young, I worked at a cold storage, we received packed, stored and shipped fruit all over the world and I was managing the shipping department there. And before one season, we had this huge barbecue and it was just to kind of kick off the season, welcome all staff. It was a seasonal job for many people, so welcome all the seasonal staff. And our sales manager, he stood up and he gave a little speech and he talked about, he pointed him out, he said, we probably had 300 people there. He said, over here on the right, my right side are all the growers, all the farmers that trust me to get them the best price I can possibly get for them. And then he said, and over here on the left are all the buyers that want me to give them the lowest price I can possibly give them. And he said, I know I'm doing my job when they're both a little bit upset with me. So tonight, some of you will probably be a little bit upset with me, but all I can do is try to bring forth some data and some facts that helps everybody to take this, this next step. So we have, as you all know, we've been talking about this, we've had this here for, I think this is our fourth time discussing this, this topic, maybe it's the third, and, and what we want to do is, is we need approval to authorize a release of a request for proposals for construction manager at risk and, and council has already given us that, but with the caveat that we include some labor standards. And so we've been working on those labor standards for some time. The project has been progressing with community input, careful planning and to keep costs in check for this recreation aquatic center, we've identified this construction manager at risk delivery method as the most suitable approach. A key goal for council has been to establish labor standards to ensure fair wages, proper training through apprenticeships and adequate health benefits. And so tonight we are here to propose, to present and to propose labor standards that we have put together after many meetings, much discussion, much research, including chat GPT, which I know a couple of council members like that, I use that all the time, so. But we've talked to the labor union, we've talked to private developers and other city staff from other cities. I believe that what we've presented tonight, what's included in your packet strikes a good balance between fair employment practices and project flexibility. We are happy to go into more detail, but for, for now, you have the draft labor standards in front of you. Prevailing wage is actually already a law, so including any language for prevailing wage is a redundancy that's optional. And if we, it shows our support for prevailing wage, but it's not necessary. It's already in state state law. Apprenticeship is also already in state law and the section is there for you in the labor standards language that's been provided. And to give you a brief explanation of what that is and our organizer from the union, Brian Shields, explained it to us on Monday. The law requires that a contractor uses a labor from an apprentice program, a state approved apprenticeship program. There's only one in this area. It's a very good one, represented by these many people here. If the contractor is a non-union contractor, the carpenters' union will not allow his, their carpenters to work for that contractor. So in that event, the contractor cannot meet the law requiring him to, to have apprentices unless he fills out a certain form saying, I tried, they said no. And if that's the case, then he can proceed with his work without pulling apprentices from any apprenticeship program. And that can be clarified further if anybody has questions. Healthcare has been the one thing that has been very hard to, it's hard to find something that promotes good healthcare for workers in that work on our projects and making sure that we get bids on our projects. So what we, what we worded there, what the words that we put together was the city encourages each contractor to make employer contributions toward the purchase of employer provided healthcare insurance coverage for each such employee performing work on the project. And if prevailing wages and requirement qualified expenditures are credited and that's already part of state law anyway. So we feel that this accomplishes the goals that council has and yeah, so we are, staff is very comfortable with this. We feel that this also allows some flexibility so that other contractors with other health programs are able to submit a bid. And some of the things that we thought of was, you know, a contractor might offer, for example, Kaiser Healthcare. And if Kaiser doesn't have a plan that is called Platinum, then if we say they have to have a Platinum plan, it, it really makes things hard for that contractor to submit a bid. He's already providing benefits. He's already doing what he's supposed to, just doesn't have the right name. Same thing with, there are contractors that provide, that I've talked to in the last 20 years. They provide benefits as an option. The employee can take the benefits or they can keep the full prevailing wage. If they want the benefits, then the cost for the benefits is deducted from their prevailing wage. And that's for any carpenter. And so what they, they do is they have options for their staff, not required for them to use it. And the ones whose spouses may already have good healthcare, well, then they just keep the cash. So if our language is too strict, it's going to be very hard to, it's not going to be very hard, but it's going to be hard for some contractors to do that. They'd have to change their whole program for one project. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we get a good pool of bidders. We want the union to bid, we want non-union to bid, and we want a qualified contractor with the lowest bid to get the job. We are servants of 23,000 people and you know, they're taxpayers and so whether we, well, it's just, it's just our staff feels that's our duty is to make sure that we do everything we can to make this as easy as possible to get a good low bid. We do have a representative with us. Renee, I don't know if you want to introduce Tom or if you have something to say first and Tom can speak to labor standards.
Yes. So, so Tom, if there's anything further to clarify what's in the standards that would help you think council to understand. Welcome any comments you have. You're muted.
That's not a good way to start. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Renee. My background is I, I am an expert in preventing wage in public works for over 45 years. I've lived with preventing wages and apprenticeship issues for my entire career. And prevailing wages in California are not new. They've been around for over 80 years. And the state has never taken the position that it's going to mandate particular fringe benefits. What it does allow though is for a contractor to provide those fringe benefits and then receive a credit against the prevailing wage, but at no time has it decided to mandate those. And there's a lot of reasons for that. A contractor needs to know on each particular project what his requirements are. If every public works project has different requirements, it's going to make it very difficult for that contractor to compete. For example, here he would have to develop a new medical program perhaps that would only last for the duration of this particular project. So in my experience, this will lower your bidders pool. The issue with the apprenticeship is clear. The carpenters have a terrific program. And they've made it clear that they will not dispatch apprentices to non-union contractors. That's going to put the non-union contractor at a disadvantage because he will not be able to employ apprentices. He therefore will be at a competitive disadvantage because he will have to pay everyone at the highest journeyman rate. Once again, that will impact the willingness of contractors that are not signed with the carpenters to participate on this project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Okay, so normally we go to public comment before.
Mayor, actually, we have one more speaker to, that can speak to a particular issue. The city of Watsonville is, has been dealing with project labor agreements for many years and, and it's caused them a lot of trouble. Even though we are not talking about a project labor agreement now, what we're, what we're talking about now is a step in that direction. And so Courtney Lindberg, Public Works Director from the city of Watsonville, agreed to come over here and just talk about what she has dealt with. And remember what she dealt with is a full project labor agreement, which is different. But we're talking about tonight, it could head in that direction. And so I asked Courtney to come talk about that.
Good evening, Council Mayor. My name's Courtney Lindberg. I'm the Public Works and Utilities Director for the city of Watsonville, and this was just a very timely night for you to have a special meeting. We had our special meeting last night where after 11 years of having a very restrictive PLA, we repealed it successfully last night. So if you want to watch a very fascinating and lively council meeting, that's one to watch. Now I will start this by saying I'm absolutely not anti PLA, nor do I have much of a relationship with the carpenters' union. The carpenters' union was not part of the challenge that we were having in Watsonville. And they came and spoke very clearly on that. So I want to kind of separate those two. Ours was very specific to specialized projects that we had a really hard time and actually couldn't bid for about 10 years, which was water waste water projects. So and what I want to address with you and just leave you with to think about is this area of California just has less people, less businesses, less contractors, just less. And while we love that about it, it also can pose challenges. So I have cities and counties call me all the time to give them advice on project labor agreements. And when I explain my specific issues, other places that have dense population don't have that issue. So there's a little idiosyncrasies that come with that. So with what the previous speaker just said, and you know, many representatives here tonight that, you know, saying that they could do that work. I don't know if that's true, just because I haven't done carpenter work and that hasn't been an issue. So, you know, I have no issue with the carpenters, but that's something to think about if you were going to exclude non-union contractors or prefer union. Just know what your inventory pool is going forward with that. That's what I would recommend that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Okay, so council, if we have questions to the three presenters, would you like to hold those off until we hear from the public? Courtney, are you going to be able to stick around for a little bit? And Tom online, are you going to be able to stick around for a little bit?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So let's go to public comment then. Anyone in the room, if you want to speak, please stand up and you have up to three minutes. It's a little deja vu going on here, right?
Mayor and Council, my name is Brian Shields, senior organizer for local six four six. I'm a little taken back because the meeting that we had was germane and I felt like we got somewhere and what was proposed is literally no, does not move the needle for prequalification language whatsoever. The carpenters' union as a stance is actually pretty much against PLAs and so this isn't on the way to be in a PLA. So there's no fear of that at all. I don't stand here, as I've said multiple times, and negotiate for any other trade than the carpenters' union. And as I, I have, I've sent in three different letters of general contractors that can fulfill the prequalification language that we set forth. And there are subcontractors as well that can do the same thing underneath the carpenter scope of work, be able to complete that work 100%. And you would have at least three bidders. And that was just the folks who I reached out to who ended up sending me letters. That's not the extent of the, our general contractor pool by any means whatsoever. One of the major differences between, everybody says union and then they think it's all the same, right? And, and thank you Courtney for making that distinction. One of the things that's different about us is we have 1,200 contractors. 1,200. We have 4,000 apprentices, 37,000 members. We have plenty of competition, tons of competition. We'll overload you with competition. It's not that. So the, the, the prequalification language that you set forth, that the staff put together is actually no prequalification language. It's more of a slap in the face. The, the prequalification that we put forth the other day is, is it, it's something that we can actually meet, right? It is important. Look at the way that healthcare system is being treated at this moment. Look at the fact that Medi-Cal is being shut down, prequalify, or prevailing wage already has prequal, or healthcare as one of its nominators, right? So to not set it aside for healthcare is almost not being a good civic citizen. Especially right now. I just had a meeting with the hospital. And in that meeting with the hospital, they're extremely concerned with the next six months. With Medi-Cal being shut down, with all the different state and federal ran medical. Here we have money that's supposed to go to medical. That's where prevailing wage comes from is the union rate. And, and instead we're just going to put it on the guy's check because one person ends up having a relationship with, you know, a teacher. I, I implore you to reconsider and look back and, and find some sort of happy medium between the two. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And we might ask you some questions later, so I hope that you can stick around.
Mayor Delgado and City Council. It's nice to be here tonight and it's nice to see all of you here. You all look really nice and happy and healthy and it's, I'm glad you are. I have, I moved here in 1955 courtesy of the United States Army and my father. And I actually lived in the barracks that are over here, right to the north of Engine Office Park. And this area is real special to me. I can remember taking the bus and going by the aquatic center area, seeing the soldiers doing all the things that soldiers do in that area. And I think this is a great project and I commend you guys for putting it together. I was just looking through the agreement, this, this city council to consider adopting this resolution. The one thing that kind of stood out to me is that, that apprentices, and it says under prevailing wage, apprentices registered in an approved program may, may be paid at the apprenticeship wage. Do any of you guys work where you may be paid wage that you agree upon? I think that that's kind of silly language and I think you ought to change that to shall be paid the appropriate wage for apprentices. I went to work at 21 years old for the carpenters' union as an apprentice. I served four years and became a journeyman carpenter. This area has been very, very good to me. I live in Carmel Valley. I have real estate property that's worth lots of money. And this area allowed me to do that. So I would encourage you, with all the development that's going on out here, we shouldn't be worrying about, we should be worried about paying people an appropriate wage that supports them, their houses, their households, their families, their medical care. And I don't think we should be pinching pennies when it comes to people's lives because those people that are out there are what make this town what it is. It isn't the rich people that are coming in here that are commuting from here to San Francisco where they're earning millions and millions of dollars. It's about the people that here support the community that go to work every day. That road is packed every day with guys driving from Salinas, Marina, Watsonville, all over the place, going to Carmel. Where I'm fortunate enough to live. So please take into consideration that you need to have these working people here in your community. And the carpenters' union is a big part of that. Thank you very much.
Is your name John Anza?
John Anzini.
Anzini. Thank you, John.
Hello, City Council. My name is Leslie Gill and I'm the one that goes blank. Thank you for being here to hear us again. I think taking a cut of your pay to pay for healthcare is robbing people. I have a friend who worked for a non-union contractor. He fell off a scaffold, broke his ankle. There was no one to pay for it. He suffered for it for years and worked on it, that worked on it as much as he could for years. And now he's permanently disabled. With the carpenters' union, we have healthcare that's not cut away from our wages. So we actually are making prevailing wages. And it's so important to have jobs here. I've gotten a lot of offers for work, but it's all in San Francisco. So. So I'd be getting up at 4:00 in the morning and working and buying my food and spending my money up in San Francisco, not down here. Right now, there are no jobs down here. Yeah, if I look a little rough, it's just because I came from a 40-hour class on, that was free paid apprenticeship, free education, free, free everything. I got knowledge that can never be taken away from me because of having unions. Non-union, if I showed up looking for a job, even if I had graduated from community college, even if I had paid my way through trade school, if I showed up at a job site, I would be laughed out of there with, with. Yeah, I think you'd need to really think about how this will, will influence society. Like healthcare is going away. DEI is going away. Things to help the little people are going away. There's not a middle class, lower class. It's a governing class and the working class.
Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you. I have to ask you to stop because you're over three minutes.
Oh, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Delgado. Fellow city council members and staff. My name is Doug Cheshire. Last time we were here, two weeks ago, it was from the dais up there that it was mentioned that you, there's an opportunity here. We have an opportunity to make something better. You know, and what we have here today, what's been presented to you today is status quo. It's not making anything better. People in this community need jobs, jobs that provide livable wages with healthcare. It's been said again and again. We all feel it. We all see it. It's in the news. Americans are suffering. Your healthcare premiums are going through the roof. Being able to have jobs that provide healthcare benefits for not only you, but your family go miles. There's too many families in this country, in this community that are one healthcare emergency away from bankruptcy. And as a community, I know we can do better. So going back to the words that were said, we have an opportunity. And I encourage this council to take this and make it the best opportunity possible. Not for me, but for the workforce that lives in and amongst our community and for the future of this community. We can no longer continue to turn a blind eye and put profits above people. We've done it for too long. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug.
Good evening, mayor, city council staff. First and foremost, thank you for all the time and effort you put into this. A lot of things running through my head, my mind, anxiety is kind of high right now. But I am going to say that when you talk about taking healthcare and put it back on those wages for those workers that don't want healthcare because their wife, or they get healthcare some other way, or they think they want the wages. My question to you is that who's checking that? To see whether that money that says, hey, DIR says, hey, we're going to pay these guys X amount of dollars on a prevailing wage job, who's checking to make sure that individual is getting that money? No one's checking. And that's a big problem. That's what we have here. And you talk about a worker that came from out of the field or is making more money than he's ever made, how does he know what the standard is as far as what prevailing wage is, other than what that employer is telling him? And that's the problem we have right now. And that's one of the problems that we're overlooking. Is no one's checking. Okay, they get certified payrolls. They had X amount of labors on a job. But who says that labor is not doing carpenters' work? And who says that individual says, okay, I don't want healthcare? How much money is going back on an individual's check? And who's going to check that? Where's the checks and balances at here? And that's what we're talking about. There are rules and regulations already set in place. We all know that. But who's checking to make sure that's happening? Other than, hey, the worker said he doesn't want healthcare. Okay, so put it back on the check. Okay, how much is going on this check? Who knows? I don't know. Do you know? Who knows? We need to stop going with, making a shot in the dark and bring light to what's happening here. I've lived in Marina for 20 plus years. I've never worked in Marina. And probably never will in my lifetime. But we can make things better for those individuals coming after me. We can make things better. Somebody needs to start checking those projects. And making sure the workers are getting paid correctly. And that's all we asking for here. Obviously decide to spend the money, but we need to make sure the individual is getting paid correctly. That's it. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to folks online. Anyone online wish to speak tonight? Just raise your hand. Okay, we'll close public comment and come back to city council. City council, how about first we ask any burning questions we have of any of the presenters, including the union representative? Councilmember McAdams?
Oh, I don't have any questions.
Okay, we'll keep your light on for the next round. I have an important question to ask our legal staff. Since the October 21 staff report and the labor standards it had in its exhibit, tonight we have a reduced text, a less stringent set of labor standards in our staff report, Exhibit A. And so my question is, during the last two weeks, since we directed staff, our legal staff, to figure this out with the legal staff of other stakeholders, has our legal staff in the last two weeks found any illegality, anything illegal to the suggested apprenticeship, the suggested healthcare, the prequalification language and the severability language that we have before is called Exhibit A, but this is the Exhibit A that the carpenters' trade is suggesting in place instead of what's in our staff report. So anything illegal in this according to our legal staff?
So, so just to, and I'll let Tom answer that question, but just to maybe phrase your question a little bit. We looked at it, but from the standpoint of whether we can implement this, not necessarily legal, illegal or.
So let's get there next. So my first question is.
But I'll let Tom answer if there's anything that would not be, I guess, in compliance with the law.
And then we'll come back to the implementability.
Yes.
Tom, on the legal angle?
With respect to the legal angle, the courts have held that an awarding body such as the city council acting in its capacity as a market participant may require additional requirements as long as it's in the best interests of the city. In other words, the city is acting as if it were a private owner. As opposed to what they characterize as a market regulator, where the awarding body is attempting to regulate activity. For example, if you had a provision that said you cannot bid on this project if you've had three unfair labor practices with the National Labor Relations Board. That would be illegal because you're acting as a market regulator. Under these conditions, with the apprenticeship program, limiting it only to the carpenters in effect, because under their proposal, they're the only apprenticeship program for carpenters that meets their standard. It would be my opinion based on prior litigation that that would be acceptable as a market participant. The city has decided that it wants the highest qualified apprentices. So I don't see a problem with that. With respect to the medical, we may run into some issues with ERISA mandating particular medical issues. I'm not quite sure if that would survive a legal challenge. I tend to think it would. The enforcement, the prequalification, I think would be considered legal if the city elected that it believed that having a strict prequalification is going to result in the highest quality and lowest bid possible. So it would be a close call perhaps on the medical as to whether it's legal.
Okay. And then our attorney, thank you, Tom. Our attorney Renee Ottega brought up implementability. On the apprenticeship paragraph, on the Exhibit A provided by the carpenters, there's two sentences. The first applies to everyone that's not carpenter related. The second paragraph applies to carpentry-related construction contractors. Does our legal staff think that that second carpentry-related paragraph is not implementable or would be difficult to implement?
Yeah, I'll let Tom answer this. I understand this, but Tom would probably be the best person to explain it.
Thank you, Tom.
Are you referring to the carpenters' proposal? That language?
So, so Tom, I sent you what they put on the dais here by PDF. Essentially, the first sentence is the sentence that is included in the city's Exhibit A. The second sentence is a carpenter-specific apprenticeship program or apprenticeship program specific to carpenters.
And I think we've had it for a few weeks now. It's not different than the last time. And since then, our legal staffs have met to discuss this.
We've, we've met with the carpenters on that, on their proposal. In terms of implementation, it would not be a problem to implement. It would just eliminate non-union contractors from employing apprentices because the carpenters' apprenticeship program has made it clear that they will not dispatch apprentices to non-union contractors for a variety of reasons. They believe that perhaps they're not qualified to train the apprentices. But for whatever reason, you would lose those non-union contractors that perform carpentry work because they would not be able to employ apprentices. Their own apprentices, in other words. There is actually another carpenter apprenticeship program in your county that is non-union affiliated. So a contractor that participates in that program would not be able to utilize his apprentices on your project.
Tom, is that other apprenticeship program in compliance with 17.77.5?
Yes, there are only two carpentry apprenticeship programs approved by the director of the Department of Industrial Relations under 1777.5, the carpenters' and the associated builders and contractors' program, which is a unilateral or non-union program.
And do they include carpentry-related?
Yes.
And do they include carpentry, non-carpenter-related?
That program is all carpenter. There may be other, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
With respect to other trades, there may be other union and non-union apprenticeship programs for those particular trades. It depends on the trade. The ABC program would not meet that formula though with respect to the graduation requirements.
Okay. Moving on to healthcare, do you have the same concern about implementability that you had with the apprenticeship carpentry-related paragraph?
For practical reasons, yes, because a contractor may have a medical program that everyone is happy with, but doesn't meet our criteria. So on your particular project, you'll have to change that program. He may have a different program throughout the state of California, but on your program, he's going to have to, on your project, he's going to have to change it.
Okay.
My experience has been when a contractor has those kinds of hurdles, they move on to the next project.
Okay. And then in this line of asking, same question for the prequal procedure dispute and enforcement paragraph and the severability, is your concern about implementability about the same as the prior two paragraphs?
Pretty much the same. Keep in mind, we've got two enforcement mechanisms already. The DIR has a very strict requirement. Certified payrolls have to be uploaded to the DIR website. Contractors must be registered. And because the contractor, the CMAR is at risk, he will have a labor compliance program to be absolutely sure that the contractors are complying with the requirements of the contract, including prevailing wage requirements. So laying another layer on top of that, I think, would be counterproductive. And in fact, under the language of the carpenters, in order to be prequalified, you have to have the medical. So a contractor would not know whether they're going to get the job, but yet they have to have the medical. So once again, I think you're going to have that same issue where the contractor may just move on to another project.
And when you say have to have medical, you mean have medical insurance for the workers?
Correct. He may have Kaiser. He may have, he may have given his employees the option and, you know, what Ismael was saying is, is possible so that they will not have the type of medical that we are proposing, that carpenters are proposing.
Okay. I have more questions, but I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues and I'll come back another round here.
Add on the severability. Yes. So the severability really relates to when you enact the law. Here, we're not enacting a law or we're not enacting a contract, so it wouldn't be relevant in this context at all.
You mean the severability suggested is a moot point? It's, it's.
In this context, yes. In other words, if we were to include a severability provision, we would include it in the contract that we actually have with a construction manager at risk. To say anything that's in this contract that is, for whatever reason, not valid, then the rest of the contract survives. When you enact the law, for example, you say, you know, this provision is, you know, for whatever reason is unconstitutional, the rest of the law stands by itself. So we don't, it's not relevant in this context where you're adopting standards to be included in a, in an RFP. It will be relevant when we go to enter into a contract.
Okay. So at this stage, could we give direction to include the severability when it's appropriate down the road?
We will include a severability provision in every law and contract that we enact here.
And will it talk about apprenticeship and healthcare expenditures as this one does?
It'll probably be more general, but it'll cover anything that is within the context of that agreement. Not just healthcare or apprenticeship programs.
Okay. Questions from Mayor Protan Visha?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all for being here. And thank you for the presentations. I also was disappointed to go see how we went to.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth, let me interrupt just a moment because Jenny is going to have some comment. But first I wanted to follow the speakers with any questions we have for the speakers.
Okay. Yes, maybe for the speakers, it would be good to.
Especially Courtney who may.
Yes. Explain, let me see where my notes are. Let back. Sorry about that. Maybe explain what a PLA is because that was discussed by Courtney.
Sure, sure. I probably should have started with that. I just speak an acronym like people understand what I'm talking about. Project Labor Agreement. So it's a contract. So you can determine the contract. And ours was any project over $600,000 with no end. And so that was the challenge to have a contract with no end. And $600,000 in 2013 is certainly not. And $600,000 in 2013 is certainly not, doesn't get you as far here in 2025. Again, ours was very difficult due to the water wastewater and getting responsive bidders. We had 10 years backlog of water wastewater projects when I started with the city. So what it requires is, the way that ours was, was if it is a project with three trades or more, then the PLA would apply. A very, if it's just one trade or super specialized, like a striping project, it would not apply. And again, we set that. So when you do a PLA, you usually negotiate with whoever you are including in the PLA. So the Trades Council that we had our contract with did not include this group here tonight. So they're separate. But it is a contract that you put in place for projects to kind of have an umbrella over them.
Thank you. And what exactly was the issue, why you wanted to repeal it?
Like I said, when I started with the city about two and a half years ago, we, I had 10, 10 years of projects that were not being bid and awarded. And when I looked into it, every time we put it out to bid, we would get zero bids. Or if we did get a bid, it would be 50, 60, 70% over the engineer's estimate, and we didn't have the money for that. And then they just didn't do anything with it and, you know, kind of deferred maintenance. So when, when I was, you know, tasked with this, you know, we worked with the unions and then we would bid certain projects without the PLA. And luckily, in this area, we do have non-union contractors that can do that work that are, you know, have their headquarters in Watsonville, funnily enough, and, you know, a lot in the Monterey, Carmel, Marina area. And so when I looked at what our inventory was of who could bid on projects competitively, unions, non-union, just anybody. I mean, as a public works director, I just want the project done. I don't, I don't care who does it because, you know, my, my workers are all covered by union. I think unions are wonderful for all the reasons that you guys listed. So it wasn't that issue. It was like, I'm trying to give someone money to do a project at my wastewater treatment plant, and no one was taking it. So that was the frustration. So looking at, like I said before, looking at what your inventory is to do the work. When we were able to bid projects, it was companies from Fresno. It was companies from Sacramento. They were coming up from Orange County. So while that's great that they're getting union work, it does nothing for people in Watsonville and then the greater Monterey, Santa Cruz area. It's not, they're not local. And so it's kind of defeats some of the purpose, but not all of it. So it just overall wasn't working for the city of Watsonville.
I still don't understand what was in the PLA, what made it so hard for businesses to bid?
I guess that the, so a contractor has to use all of the subs that they hire would have to be pulled from the local union halls. And for whatever reason, we would meet with them and say, this is the project, can you do this? Yes. You know, do you have people that can do all of these things? Do you understand the scope? I mean, I've spent years on this, and yes, I can do that. And then when it came down to it, it was project after project of nothing. And so it was very frustrating. You know, it makes you feel like, am I missing something here? But then when we would bid it without the PLA, boom, five proposals, all within the engineer's estimate, seven proposals, all within the engineer's estimate. So it was like, the common denominator seemed to have been that barrier.
So the problem was that the PLA required local union workers only?
It doesn't require local union because, like I said, the union workers that were being awarded the contract were bringing in, you know, they were contractors from Fresno, Alameda, not, they're California, but I wouldn't consider that local to this area.
Okay, I think I understand it, but not completely. So it was that the requirement was to hire only local workers?
Only union, only union. So the, so the local, non-union contractors were left out?
Yes, okay. Thank you. And you also mentioned, you know, we live in an area that's not as dense. Of course, this also means we have fewer projects. So you would think that even it out, so.
You'd think, I'd hope that it would.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know, Tom could add something here regarding PLAs? If that would be helpful.
I don't know that it matters. We're not talking about PLAs. To say that it's in the step of, maybe it is, but that's not for us tonight.
Very well.
Okay, I had a question for Brian. Brian, tonight's proposed Exhibit A, under healthcare, says the city encourages healthcare insurance coverage, basically. And what you gave us, it has five shall statements in that, in that language. So do you think that the staff report, Exhibit A, healthcare that encourages, would get us very far down the road in a good direction compared to where there's five shall statements?
I believe that the healthcare that was put in this... Oh, again, apologize. I believe that the, the healthcare that was put in the staff report that encourages, I've, I've seen encouragement language fall on its face almost every single time that it's been implemented somewhere. So to encourage anything is, it takes a lot of effort and it takes a lot of watching it, right? These things get buried inside of documents. And, and as it comes up, I'm sure this council would hold to account encouragement, right? Over whatever general contractor was selected. But to what does that mean as far as, as what does healthcare encouragement mean, right? That you're, you have, you're, pay some money and you could go to the local clinic? Or I'm not sure what exactly encouragement means. In our, in our, in our proposal, it has the 500-hour marker for healthcare, and that can be moved up, right? Certainly, you can move that up to 750 hours to 1,000 hours. And the reason that we, we set it at that threshold is because we know that there are a lot, there are, that there are very few subcontractors in the other trades, like the mechanical, electrical plumbers, so on and so forth, right? So all the points that you were making are absolutely true, and we stand with you on that. We left the building trades because of those issues, and we're actually embarrassed about it. We haven't been a part of the building trades or negotiated on PLAs, all that kind of stuff, for years. So actually, I think Watsonville should take a look at prequalification language because it'll allow you guys to move a lot faster. And this is the...
Hey, Brian, you need to talk to us. We're just seeing some questions.
Apologies.
All right, that's, that's all I had for you, Brian.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Apologies, thank you.
Okay, let's go to Brian McCarthy, if you have questions, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a couple of quick questions. First one is, in terms of what we're adopting tonight, this is very project-specific, correct? And we're not setting any precedent. I mean, regardless of what we decide tonight, it's never going to affect future projects or decisions. No court would look back and say, hey, well, you did it on this, you have to... No, that's correct, okay. And then kind of just a clarification, I saw that shall language too in one version, but every version I have right now is, for the wages, says shall, not should. So was that a good correction that happened, or am I missing something? I mean, we have to pay prevailing rate, right?
Yeah, yes, I think what was being referred to by the commenter was apprenticeship standard, sorry. Apprentices shall be paid, may be paid, but it says at least the applicable apprentice prevailing rate, meaning they can be paid more.
Exactly right. That's exactly why the language is listed in the statute that way. It allows for a contractor to pay his apprentice more than the statutory required amount.
Okay, so then my two questions, I think, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and Councilman McCarthy, the shaws I was referring to were in the healthcare language of October 16th that we were ready to approve with staff's blessing. They came up with it, they said they were good. And now what we have are not shaws, but encourage.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, so if we're done with questions from the speakers, now we'll go to council comments, other questions to staff, et cetera, whatever, basically, you'd like to talk about. We'll kick off with Councilman McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for bringing that up, how the, that word did change because the purpose of taking this two weeks was for the attorneys to re-review everything, to collaborate with the carpenters' attorney, and to bring us back a policy that they believe is for the good of this project that will get this sports and aquatic center built. And that's really what my priority is. We see that delay just costs money. Like the Sea Haven Park, we're in a deficit of $7 million because we've continued to delay. So if we continue to delay, we are not going to get this amazing community facility to fruition. I appreciate the discussion about the healthcare benefits. And after the meeting two weeks ago, I did some research, and our city employees don't even get platinum healthcare. And they have to pay into plans. That includes our public safety and all of our employees. So I mean, if we're going to like go to bat for the union workers, we better be ready to go to bat for our employees. So I don't want to see the policy language be a barrier of what the city of Watsonville experienced. And that meeting was very timely. I, I, there were some news articles this morning that I read, and I watched a little bit of that meeting. And so for me, I was already hesitant two weeks ago. And after learning about what the city of Watsonville experienced, I have more concerns. I also, for me, want to see a policy that welcomes a fair and open bidding, you know, process. And I think that, you know, the language in the carpenters exhibit, it's exclusive, and that's what they want. I mean, they want, they want the job, they want to bid the job. They want to be the only bidders, and then they could bid as high as they want. And then we don't build the facility. I also want to ensure that small business owners and sole proprietor contractors, when we talk about the limited labor pool in the area, not, there's thousands and thousands of, you know, sole proprietor, small niche contractors who are not in the union and that do live here and are raising their families in the area and that work really, really hard also. And so for me, you know, I don't want to unintentionally exclude that group of, of hardworking people. And then really, I mean, I just lean on what the city of Watsonville has experienced. By having too stringent of policy language, we are shooting ourselves in the foot. And we could try it. I wouldn't want to wait 10 years, as long as Watsonville. But I mean, maybe we could try it for a couple of years, and then the project budget will be, we won't have the money to build the project. So I appreciate taking this extra time. And I trust that what staff brought, brought back to us, because I'm not an attorney, is what is the best for the city and for our residents and for our community to have this beautiful aquatic and, and sports facility. So and with that, I'm happy to approve and support what's in tonight's agenda. I don't want to make the sausage. We tried to make the sausage two weeks ago, and it didn't work. And so we put the trust into the attorney's hands, and this is what they brought back. So I don't want to reword everything because they've had two weeks and meetings to figure that out. And they've had all of this documentation. And this is what the attorneys have brought back to us. And so I, that's what I have to support and trust is the best for the city and the worker. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jenny.
Quick, quick comment, just, it was also staff who actually we worked closely with and got feedback from other stakeholders.
Okay, the October 21 staff report had much more specific language in its Exhibit A than the Exhibit A tonight. And that staff report concluded saying, overall, the adoption of these labor standards aligns with the city's goals of cost control, quality construction, local economic support, and fair labor practices. And they were much, they had more shaws in it than we see tonight, and they had more language in every paragraph except prevailing wage has remained static. So if on September 21st, we told them, good start, go back, see if we can make them better, it's actually taken a step backward from what is already working according to the staff report of October 21st. So I would like to take a step forward. And in the case of healthcare and prequalification procedures disputes and enforcement, make those a bonus where, and we've talked about this with staff, and it's, it's, it's done, there's a lot of precedent. So that if, if, if my RF, if my submittal to the RFP apply, includes this healthcare language and this prequal language, then mine would score a little bit higher on that, that metric than someone who doesn't. So overall, I might have 97 points, and someone else might have 93 points because they didn't get those two bonuses. But it doesn't doesn't remove anyone from bidding if they don't comply, but they won't score as high. It's like a veteran's preference. If you're not a veteran and you apply for the same job that a veteran does, you can score 100, but the veteran can score 105 because they get the veteran's preference. So it'd be a bonus in that, in that vein. As far as the apprenticeship, because I just spoke to the healthcare and the prequal stuff. As far as apprenticeship, staff has already said that the adoption of that apprenticeship language works on September 21st with a couple of, there's a couple of differences between the apprenticeship in tonight's Exhibit A provided by the trades and the Exhibit A in September 21st staff report that staff said it aligns with our goals, cost control, and everything else. And so I would tonight like to do better than what we did on September 21st and propose that we adopt this language we have from the unions tonight with a bonus applied to those two paragraphs I mentioned, and then the apprentice being adopted by us under the condition that staff come back to us if in the next week they find it to be unworkable for some reason or illegal. But tonight, we didn't hear that. We heard that the apprenticeship here, this text, might be difficult implementing. But since carpentry is 70% of the project and we have 1,200 potential contractors who do carpentry, I think we'll find when we let the RFP out, that we'll have many bidders in the carpentry field. And we won't have a dearth of non-carpentry bidders because prevailing wage is pretty standard. And these healthcare and prequal, those are bonus, they're not required, they're bonus. So that's what I would like to see is basically this Exhibit A that's on our dais tonight, it's not the staff report Exhibit A, but it looks more like September 21st Exhibit A that staff liked. I would like to see this go forward because it's the best we can do. And when we talk about hardworking, non-union members and hardworking union members, the hardworking union members are going to be able to stay here and afford a home more likely and afford the cost of living more likely. The non-union hard workers who aren't getting the same benefits are going to have to move away anyway. And I, I think that, that the, the cliche that we want our children, grandchildren to be able to stay in this area and work, this is one of those times where we can do something in, in that line. Okay, so I've spoken my five minutes. Let's go to Councilmember Biala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to ask some more questions, if I could. And it's kind of all scattered, so please, you know, bear with me. So I just wanted to say again, I think, repeating what Councilmember McAdam said, the covered California Platinum, which is what the union is, is, is suggesting, is far beyond what we provide for our employees, correct? Okay, and the wages that they get as a city employee, then they, it's separate from our, the healthcare issue. So they have a chance to pay into, whether it's Kaiser or Blue Cross or whatever, but that differential is paid by the employee?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we don't have an arrangement where if you're paid a wage, if you elect healthcare, we take it away from your wages. So this is a little different.
That's correct.
Okay. And having said that, I do want to say again that the prevailing wage, as I understand it, is $68 an hour. And I've been told, which equates to 140,000 or so a year, which is a good wage. And I was told also that the union wages, that's a starting point so that maybe many of you are getting more than that. So I'm just being realistic, okay? Cause I, I, I have to balance out everything. So I just want to say that that seems fair to me. Um, and there is a cost to healthcare and, and it is very expensive. Yes. And it's very important to me. But I know that for some people, including our own employees, healthcare isn't as important to them as it is to me. I mean, I'm retired, so it's extremely important. But when you're younger and you're pretty healthy, it's not so important to you. And so even some of our own employees would opt not to have it if they could have a, a higher wage, let's say. In this case, everybody would have to make a decision for themselves, whether I want healthcare and I still get the same wage. In your case, you would have to make a decision out of that $68 an hour. You know, what do you want to have the full $68? Or do you value healthcare with your condition or your age or your medical issues or whatever? That it's more important for you to have healthcare and then you pay out of that. So I think, uh, you know, I think that's what I'm, I'm trying to work out here. Um, Brian wants to answer, but I think we're not having the dialogue. I'm sorry. We've already gone through the public, um, public process. So, you know, I, um, somebody, one of our staff can clarify if that's not right, but I don't want to have this back and forth with the public at this point. So is there any comment from the city manager if I've, I've conceived of this incorrectly?
No, you're, you're correct.
Okay. Good. Okay. Then, um, and by the way, I do, um, I do agree that putting in, um, a labor standards in, say encourages is, doesn't sit right with me. I think we need to clarify that a little bit more and make it a little more concrete if we're going to go in this way. Um, but encourages is, is such a fluffy word that it doesn't mean anything. Okay, um, so in, in the staff report, we talk about, um, healthcare. If, if, if a contractor offers, uh, some additional healthcare that they would get extra points. That means to be considered for a bid, right? So we have, we're on a point system. So we'd give them an advantage. Okay. Now that gives the advantage to the contractor. It does nothing for the employee or the workers. I mean, this is for them to get a contract. And if, if we're concerned about how the workers benefit, then I think that's a different story. This is just get, gets them, you know, uh, the contractor benefits. So, and I don't know if this is even possible, but it seems like maybe if, um, if, uh, uh, a contractor comes to the table and says, I will provide healthcare. So I get a little points. And they also specify in, in the case of union, that we will uh, provide some kind of financial incentive for the employees, um, to get some healthcare. So the employees still have to pay for their healthcare because they value it and it is coming out of their, their, um, their wages. But there's a little bit of incentive given from the contractors too. That if you choose to do that, will help you a little. And I don't have no idea if that's even kosher or whether it's doable. But in that way, the workers benefit is, is not just all the benefits going on the healthcare issue just to the, you know, to the, um, uh, contractor. So that's kind of one of my, my thoughts because I'm desperately trying to get to an agreement that fits for everyone. And, you know, these kinds of issues, you can already see we're get, we're, we're lining up, we're, we're opposing each other at this point. And so I'm trying to figure out maybe a creative way to, you know, to mend those fences. And I want to, um, respond to the whole issue of if we, if we come, if we go out and let's say we go with the, the labor agreements. And then we don't get any bids because they're all 70% over what our cap was, which would be a terrible thing. It's a lose for the union because we're not going to accept that, guys. We don't have money like that. So we're gonna, you know, and I heard, heard the last time I think from Ishmael that, that we don't have to accept any bids, even though we put it out to bid and we get, let's say three, and they're 70% over. So we don't have to do that. So you guys lose too. Not only do we lose because we don't get to get our buildings built, but you lose too because we're not going to accept it. We don't have the money right now. Um, so in those cases, I don't want to spend the 10 years and maybe Ishmael, you can give us some, you know, some direction. But it seems like we, we don't just put out the same bid again, hoping somebody is going to reconsider. I think we, we will have learned something that what, whatever we put in that RFP was not acceptable. It does not help the city get our facility built. So to me, that's, is, is a delay again, because we have to go back to the drawing board and figure out another kind of bid. So we'd be repeating what we're trying to do tonight, essentially. So I'm, I'm a little, you know, wary of, of that, but the worst case scenario, scenario, this could be a test. And if that test results in things that are not good for the city, then we'd come back and then start all over again. Um, and, and that's if we, now the other way too, it could be a test that we, we go with what is being proposed today and boom, we have 10 people. And, and, and 50% of them come in at the cap that was already decided by the CMR. So that, that's one of the, you know, the concerns I have. And Ida Ishmael, do you have anything to say about how, how that would play out? Let's say if we got in the situation of Watsonville.
If, if we got bids in that were too high, we would have to reject them all. Uh, come back to you for permission to remove the labor standards and, and rebid the project. Or, or find additional money.
Okay.
And, and, and we don't know that. I'm trying real hard to, uh, stick to, uh, what I know to be factual. Um, we don't know what the bids are going to be. But if, if, uh, non-union is excluded because of the language that the union submitted.
Right. Yes. Good point.
Absolutely. There's some freedom to bump the price up a little bit on the union side. Will they do it? I don't know. That I don't know.
Right.
But that freedom is there because they've lost their competition.
Right.
Um, and, and competition is, gosh, it's a foundation of our country. Um, so we want, we want, staff wants non-union to be able to bid and to not be restricted by any language in this labor, these labor standards.
And, and by the same token, I challenge them that the union, the union contractors, can they come closer to our bid? I mean, you know, that's up to, to them. That's not up to us. We set a standard and if you can work out with all the apprentice things in the healthcare and you can be the winner of the bid, hey, we're ecstatic.
Absolutely.
But, but if you're forcing us into a situation where everything is going to be way out of the line of our cap that we know we can afford that, we've assessed it. Everybody says this is, this, this will cost this much. And then now we put it out and all the, the, the folks that would bid at that time, uh, potentially are gone. And the union is requesting so much higher, you force us into saying no. But if you come in as a union contractor and can do it, that's, that is totally a win for us. There's no debate for us. I mean, that, that, that suits our values. It suits everything. So, but, but if that's not the scenario, then we, then we have to look at the reality of things. No, I'll, I'll go second round.
Good. Thank you, Kathy. Mayor Protem Visha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like I started to say, I was disappointed to see that we got less language than two weeks ago. And I had been hoping that the legal departments from both parties would have figured it out and come to us with, this is what we agreed upon from both sides. Council, just approve and go home. But anyway, so.
Can I, uh, so can I speak to that? We, we did meet with the union on, on Monday and it was, it was, it was productive in the sense that I think when we, uh, when we all logged off of our team's meeting, we understood each other. And I think Brian alluded to that, that earlier as well. There was definitely an understanding. But it was also very clear that the, the language submitted by the union, um, excluded non-union contractors. It, it, um, diminished competition. And, um, and, and the healthcare thing is, is really huge. I've talked to a hundred people about it and, and, um, things I've heard is, oh my God, that's crazy. I, I'm a director, have a very good salary. I do not get the platinum plan. I get the same 576 or $86 toward healthcare that the city pays. And any, any amount of the premium that is above that, I pay. So, um, yeah, I, I have guys in Public Works that, um, you know, they don't have platinum healthcare plans. Uh, they might have gold, they might have bronze, they might have the very lowest plan because that's all they can afford. Their salaries are 30 to $35 an hour. So half of what prevailing wage is. So, so to staff felt, uh, very convicted that to say, we demand the platinum plan was just asking way too much of any contractor that gets us. If a contractor comes in and gives the platinum plan, the union does, by all means, we're, we're very happy that they do that. But it, it's going to exclude a lot of people. Um, on October 21st, we, we were under the impression that from the previous meeting, council said, work with the union, bring something back. That's what we did. After that meeting, the direction was work with them and find out, my interpretation anyway, what's best for us. What's best for us and, uh, is a lot different than we want you to include this language. So if, if council wants that language, by all means, we'll go back and just include it. Come back with a staff report on consent calendar and, and it'll be a quick meeting. But if you ask us what's best for the city of Marina, we have to be honest with you and tell you that the platinum plan, um, being specific with an apprenticeship program that graduates more than X, a certain amount of people per, um, per year, that excludes the non-union apprenticeship program completely. They wouldn't be able to bid at all. Those, uh, that language that was in there absolutely excludes non-union contractors from submitting a bid. And if that's council's desire, staff will, will make it happen.
Thank you.
That, that's why there's less language in tonight's.
Thank you. And, and yeah, what's best for us? Oh, sorry.
I was just going to add that, that part of the direction too was to, you know, speak to, you know, all relevant stakeholders as part of that process. So that's why you may see, you know, it's part of this, we kind of further refine, um, after having taken in all that information.
Thank you. Because I saw it way broader. What's best for us? What's best for us as a community? We spoke about our own residents not having even ever worked in our own city with all the construction that's going on in our own city.
Well, but, but part of the problem for that, uh, Mayor Protem, if we awarded this contract to a non-union contractor and he wanted to hire some of these people, the union would say no. So the reason they haven't worked here is not because there hasn't been work. It's been non-union work that they are not allowed to work in. And, and.
Okay. Let's, let's maintain order.
It, uh, I'm not like, um, if I misunderstood you the other day, that's what I understood you were saying.
Yeah. Brian, Brian, please. Anything more? And then we'll ask Brian some questions later.
Yes. Um, I wanted to, um, talk about, as I've said in previous meetings, apprenticeships are very important to me. And I think for us as a community and, um, I've understood that there's only two organizations that offer carpentry apprenticeships. One is the union and the other one is the ABC. And, um, ABC has on average fewer than 17 apprentices, apprentices per year. And the carpenters union, if I calculated correctly, 959, almost a thousand. So there's such a big difference. And I've also said, I, I visited the training center. I really see the quality, what they're doing. So it's comparing apples to pears or oranges. And, um, so I have, I have a problem with that and I don't know how to um, catch that in language, unlike we approve the carpenters language. So yeah, I do have another question. Suppose we would say, okay, we approve the language that's, um, proposed by the carpenters union and there's no legal problem with that, as I understood. Maybe for the medical, so that needs to be figured out. Suppose we go through the bidding process, um, and it comes out too high. We have to rebid, you know, have to start over. How long is the bidding process?
For our, for the CMR?
Yes.
Uh, that we would probably release that for four to six weeks with the holidays, depending on when we get permission to do it. It, it might be eight weeks, but.
Yes, but if we're talking about.
Normally it's, normally it's 30 days is what we do. Uh, but again, with the holidays coming up, depending on when.
About two months, we can, we know whether this can work or not.
Yes.
Because that's what Councilmember Biala gave us an option, like maybe, maybe they come in within budget.
So we have a input from the city attorney. We'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. I'll stop for now. Yeah, thank you.
To clarify, this is a slightly different process where it's a construction manager at risk. So we would first go out to bid for the construction manager at risk. Uh, at some point we'd get, this would be for pre-construction services. Uh, then we would get, the contractor would come up with a guaranteed maximum bid or guaranteed maximum price. It includes, at that point, we would find out because with these labor standards, you can't, you know, achieve what we want to achieve. And so we'd probably have to start, uh, from scratch, uh, bring that back, probably remove the labor standards. We'd have to figure out where we are in the process and adjust. So because we're going with a slightly different, um, procurement process, it's going to be, you know, we'll have to figure out where we stand at that point and how we adjust the process going forward.
And can you give an indication how long you think that will take that process?
I, I don't, I can't. Yeah. I mean, I, I think part of the, the pre-construction process, not sure how long that would take before we get a guaranteed maximum price.
Thank you.
Okay. And, uh, we will get to questions, um, clarifications from the trades representatives, but right now we're going to go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, first I just want to, for anyone in the audience that doesn't know how late we can go and it can sometimes be hours. So I, I appreciate Brit, is it Brittany? Courtney, thank you. Um, being here, I'm certainly not going to ask you to leave, but I don't, I don't have any further questions for Courtney.
Yeah, those ended about 30 minutes ago.
Wanted to make that clear. If there's an expectation that's good into the next 30 minutes, don't get yourself. So we talked about this platinum plan issue and I'm just wondering, why didn't staff come back and suggest maybe that we do require something of a lesser value? Is it staff's opinion that it would still be cost prohibitive if we did that, say, require contributions to the bronze level or?
Ishmael, he can respond to that or Tom can respond to that.
So the, the initial proposal at our last meeting was, you know, that there were contributions to this platinum level health plan. And what I think I understand is that staff kind of came back and said, well, under, under our staff's new proposal, there's no contributions, no required contributions. But what I'm curious is why didn't staff come back and say, maybe, okay, there's still contributions required, but maybe it's not platinum, it's bronze or?
Uh, again, like, like I said earlier, some contractors may have different plans, uh, Kaiser, they might not be called bronze, gold or silver. So, uh, we can change the word encourages, that, that's easy. The, and we have an enforcement provision that the construction manager at risk would provide enforcement for all of this. Uh, gentleman earlier mentioned that, you know, there's, um, some contractors will either, uh, get the employee the benefits or just the cash. And, and, and he, you know, he repeated who's watching that. Uh, on public part, public works projects, we do watch. We, we just recently, um, informed the Department of Industrial Relations that we saw something that looked fishy in, in some certified payroll reports from a contractor. So our inspectors get to a job, they take pictures of who's working and what they're doing. They take notes of the person's name. After a while they get to know the name. So they know Ricky, Bobby and Angela are working today on this project and they're doing carpentry. Ricky, Bobby and Angela are working today on this project and they're doing carpentry work or whatever it is. So enforcement is possible. It's going to be an expense, but it's, it's negligible when you're talking about forty-two million dollar project. So, um, that is why we, we changed the language and, um, I apologize if it seems like, oh, we, you know, we're just kind of nonchalant about it. We, we encourage you to have healthcare. No, we encourage it and, and then we're going to have the point system for, uh, for bidders. And then we also are going to have the C Mar, um, helping us with enforcement of it and coming up with an enforcement plan.
I was just gonna say, I mean, in the staff report, we included the, the possibility of having a points system for healthcare to provide some level, but we didn't want to start picking and choosing, uh, which, which specific plan.
Okay. But if the council decided that that was council's priority to ensure that everybody was offered healthcare, could, and I hate asking these questions on the fly, it feels very unfair to staff. Um, so if you don't know, that's fine. But could language something like must make contributions to the covered California lowest rate for that employee of some, some kind of plan? I mean, is there a way to ensure that the contributions are being provided? That's auditable and forcible, but also gives folks a, an almost guaranteed opportunity for healthcare?
Yeah. I'll let Tom answer, um, that if you have some input, if we can craft some language, I think we probably can. I think that has practical, uh, implications in terms of, uh, some of these issues which we raised. Um, so Tom?
Sure. The labor standards as they're drafted by the carpenters, uh, union carpenter contractor will automatically meet those. But for a non-union contractor, the medical, for example, is going to be something that's new. So even if you lower the standard, that still may discourage the non-union contractor who may have some other program that they like. They may, may have just Kaiser or employee only. And the employees are okay with that. If the non-union contractor has to go back to his employees and say, oh, by the way, we're going to increase your medical benefits and reduce your wages by ten dollars. He may lose that worker. So he's going to, it's my experience, he will have to maintain that worker's payroll, the same wage rate, plus incur the cost of the additional medical, which again puts him at a competitive disadvantage to the carpenter, union contractor. So it goes back to the idea of you're reducing your bidder's pool.
Okay, thank you. But just to be clear, in, in the original language, we're not requiring that the contractor, uh, purchase the whatever plan. We're, we're requiring that they make contributions equivalent to that. Is that correct?
Well, they automatically have to contribute amount equal to the medical either on the check or to a medical plan. That's the option to, for a contractor.
I guess why, why I'm confused about this issue of, well, maybe the contractor doesn't offer, you know, the Platinum Plan. Well, it doesn't matter because we're not saying they have to offer it. We're saying that they have to make contributions equivalent to that amount. Or am I misunderstanding?
The prevailing wage statute would require him, a contractor to pay, make that contribution either to a medical plan or to the worker's wages. They have that flexibility.
Okay. I think that, uh, yeah, that's my questions for now. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I'd like to ask Brian a couple of questions. Brian Shields, can you come up, please? You've heard the discussion the last twenty minutes about the Platinum being higher than our city employees and, and higher than most other non-union folks. What, what is your thought on requiring Califor, covered California Platinum level plan?
Uh, may I speak to prevailing wage and how it applies to, uh, um, healthcare?
Well, answer, please answer my question first.
Sure. Uh, will you restate the question? I apologize.
Yeah, there's been discussion the last thirty minutes about the, the trade, the carpenters union, um, language requiring covered California Platinum level plan. And we've heard some, some comments tonight that that would be, uh, kind of a death strike to any non-union and some other corporations like Kaiser, for instance.
So, um, so they're able to make the expenditure, as Brian had stated, uh, and, uh, in lieu of actually providing the service. That's where the, that term expenditure is so important in there. As well as, uh, prevailing wage already includes, so the Department of Industrial Relations sets prevailing wage. And the way that they set that is it's the total net value of an hourly rate for a union carpenter, which is a carpenter rate or a union laborer, which is the laborer rate, right? So what it is, is the base rate of pay. So the sixty-eight dollars that, that Kathy had mentioned, right? So that's the, the hourly rate. And then on top of that is healthcare, which is the expenditure for healthcare. And then pension and annuity, right? And so that, that sandwich in totality makes up prevailing wage. So this, this project already requires prevailing wage. It's just that by only requiring, uh, prevailing wage as it is by itself, it is not creating opportunities for people to, to, uh, have a pension in the future, right? It is not creating opportunities for people to have healthcare for their families. You're just putting it all on the, um, check. Uh, one thing that's important to make a distinction about this is that when prevailing wage is the only requirement on that project. And there are examples and we'll bring some of them forward in the City of Marina, certainly. But we have them all over the state, uh, examples of misclassification. So the Department of Industrial Relations says that, uh, a carpenter scope of work is this, operator scope of work is this, laborer scope of work is this, electrical, you understand, right? So it's laid out in text. And so therefore anybody working on a public works project should be paid according to the work that they are performing. Now, what we find consistently, especially around things like formwork, um, uh, drywall is on public works projects where the prevailing wage is the requirement that contractor hires on individuals at the, uh, at laborer rate. Um, you wonder how they might be able to beat the numbers if one contractor is allowed to have apprentices and the other one doesn't. Well, they do that by misclassification of workers. And, and that is, uh, rampant, uh, throughout Monterey County, all over the place. It's, it is pretty much standard set of practice at this point in time. So our contractors, like I said, uh, they're able to meet the, um, Platinum level healthcare plan. Uh, all of our contractors, all twelve hundred that I mentioned, right? Those are throughout the state. But all those contractors, uh, provide Platinum level healthcare to all of those workers that, that they employ. Um, so that is a part of prevailing wage already. So essentially by only adopting prevailing wage, uh, that money could have gone towards healthcare, which is an industry that is, uh, in great need at this moment. Um, and, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Brian. Okay, um, Councilmember McCarthy, you mentioned you might have more questions again. Okay. I'd like to try to move the motion here. It's four parts, just to be clear. The first part is adopt the prevailing wage text that is duplicated, duplicated in both the staff exhibit A and the trades exhibit A. There's no, no argument between those two. Secondly, as a bonus, adopt the trades language in apprenticeship. So if you can meet the apprenticeship language, great, you get a bonus. If you can't, you still submit your bid, you still qualify, but you just don't get that bonus. And for healthcare.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, when you say bonus, you, are you talking about this extra points?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Likewise with healthcare and pre-qualification. So the third piece of the motion is that the healthcare and the pre-qualification procedure disputes and enforcement are also, as written in the exhibit A of the carpenters union that we've received tonight, very similar, anyway, uh, as a bonus. And then lastly, if the city doesn't receive bids that the city likes, that we redraft the RFP and send it back out with some watered down language. So I'll just repeat, one, adopt the prevailing wage that both exhibit As have. I guess I'll combine my two and three. Secondly, have the apprenticeship to healthcare and the pre-qual procedure disputes and enforcement be bonus. And, uh, lastly, if the city doesn't receive bids to its first RFP that the city wants, then we redraft the RFP and send it back out. But my motion would die for lack of a second.
I will second.
Okay, let's go to our city attorney.
Yes, uh, I think the only one potentially problematic is the pre-qualification, uh, language there. I think, um, uh, maybe Tom, I don't know if, if you've got an issue with it, but I think we discussed, um, how this pre-qualifying might. I guess this whole process might be a pre-qualification in a, in a way. This bonus process, you're pre-qualifying even before you're.
Right. But I asked Tom, one, was it illegally? He said no. And then two, the implementability that you brought up, he said it may, uh, be a problem implementing. But if it's a bonus, you don't even have to, you can ignore it. You just don't get the bonus score for that, for that piece.
God, if you don't submit, um, pre-qualification documents.
Yeah. If you don't comply with that text, you just don't get whatever points you would get if you did comply.
Understood.
And to, and to clarify, that would be at the pre-qualification stage, the contractor would submit his medical and his apprenticeship and would earn the points at that stage. So he's making the commitment that if he's awarded the contract, he will follow through with his commitment.
Right. And he will score more points when he makes that commitment on the initial RFP than someone who doesn't regarding that particular paragraph.
So in this respect, he, such a contractor wouldn't need, uh, to pre-qualify. Either, they either get the points or they don't get the points.
That's my understanding.
Right. So you don't get extra points just for getting, I guess, for qualifying and getting points on top of points.
Well, for, I don't see the pre-qual.
There's two, there's two, I guess there's a few procedures here. There's a pre-qualification language, which talks about, um, submitting some documentation that you meet these standards before you even submit a bid. Right? Before your bid is even, you know, reviewed. That's step one. This paragraph has a few things in it.
Gotcha.
Uh, there's the enforcement mechanism, which is the last paragraph of that. Um, and essentially that it's those two components.
Okay. So there's three paragraphs. Uh, the first one is the pre-qual requirements.
Yes, except we would just, we wouldn't call it pre-qualification. We would just say that, you know, submit is part of this program, which is, I think it's going to be a standard, not a bonus.
Right. So yes.
To submit an enforcement program.
Right. So I would like to amend my motion, if the second would hold, that that pre-qual just be a requirement, not a bonus. It's just.
You know, let, let me just see if I could separate. There's, there's three components. There's pre-qual. There's an enforcement program. And then the third one is, uh, you know, this labor management cooperation committee. So there's three components to that. I guess what I'm saying is there probably wouldn't be a need for a pre-qualification program if you're awarding points. The pre-qualification program is to say, yes or no, you meet these standards. If you don't meet these standards, then we're not even reviewing it. But because we're not doing that, it's a point system, then you don't really have to go through that process. So then the last two you have are the enforcement and this, uh, labor management cooperation committee that, uh, could potentially also be involved in enforcement.
Okay. So if the latter two were bonus and the first one was not, that would just require, does that make sense to you?
Yes, there's going to be a, an enforcement program that we're going to require of the correct. So it would just be the last one that, uh, would be a bonus.
Okay. So I would like to modify my, my motion.
Did I get that right? Tom, Tom can probably chime in maybe.
I think I understood correctly.
Okay. So I'm going to have, ask for legal help to adopt the motion. I'm going to repeat this. Adopt the prevailing wage as stated in both exhibit As. That's number one. Number two, adopt the healthcare and apprenticeship as bonus. Thirdly, I want you to tell me what you just said again, and I'd like to put that in the motion as regarding the pre-qual procedure.
Sure. That the enforcement program, uh, that, uh, the bidder would need to submit an enforcement program to comply with any provisions that are ultimately, uh, part of this or, you know, prevailing wage and anything else that, that, that bidder ultimately proposes.
Okay. Does that cover the, the pre-qual dispute and enforcement?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So if the second holds.
Yes, it holds.
Okay. Uh, all right. Let's go to Councilmember Biala for discussion and then McCarthy.
Okay, uh, first, um, I, I really, uh, do not like the stated apprenticeship wording. I, I feel like we, we, we have to, uh, not have an exclusive arrangement, um, that favors the, um, the union on the apprenticeship. So I would not, I would not, uh, agree to that. On the healthcare, um, we can't, we can't go in with covered California Platinum. I mean, it, 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 it just, to put that out when we don't even provide that for our own employees, I think in the development world will, I think we would look a little, um, radical. Um, and I, I, I just wouldn't want to see that. Um, I would say that, uh, it should be at least to the level of what the City of Marina offers um, to its own employees. And I don't know how you, if you feather this out, if somebody already has a, and, and maybe it, I'm thinking about this, you know, I, if other, uh, uh, contractors have already healthcare benefits that may not even be up to ours, but it seems to work for them. I'm, I'm just wondering why we would, you know, we would eliminate them. But, but maybe this is the minimums, uh, the maximum standard. So it could allow for other, um, you know, other, um, uh, arrangements for healthcare. And, uh, because I think it's important that, that there is flexibility on healthcare, but that we offer, uh, sort of a minimum reasonable and, um, you know, kind of healthcare coverage when we can. And I like the idea of bonuses being added. I, I, I think on the pre, pre-qualification one, I, I think only possibly the, um, uh, the enforcement one, you know, um, and that would be on a bonus too. Um, and I don't, I, I don't think we need this severability. I, I don't remember what you said about it, but, um, I would like, um, and I don't know how to, uh, to word this, um, but we do have to change on our, our, uh, labor standards. Take out encourages and you said you could figure out a more definitive, um, verbiage for that. But if this goes out in this form, however, we agree on it. And if we don't get adequate bidders and we go back to it, I don't, I think that we then adopt what the city has proposed today. I, I don't want to sit here again and hash out all the details and waste more time. We either do something in which we find that non-union and union, um, uh, contractors within that, the C Mar, um, methodology are able to come up with, with what the city needs. And if it doesn't, because we've added, add additional things, then the alternative is that we revert back to today's staff recommendations. Um, because I, I just cringe at going through this again and working through all the details. And I think some of this is, we're going to find, has one, one stipulation on this. Then we look at it and we're going to have five more things that we have to decide to make it clearer. And I, I think that's, it's getting really out of hand at that point. So that's my recommendations of, if, um, if we're, and I, I, as it stated now. And I, I think that's, it's getting really out of hand at that point. So that's my recommendations of, if, if we're, and I, as it stated now, Mr. Mayor, I would oppose it.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. So the severability language has been stricken, as applicable later down the road, not right now.
Okay.
And the health care and the apprenticeships are bonus only. They exclude no one. And I think that if somehow any contractor can keep costs down to fit the bid and give their workers more, that's great. If they can't keep their costs down to give their workers more, then they're going to come out a little bit higher cost, and they probably wouldn't be chosen because we're going to try to go with the lowest bidder. So I don't think that giving bonus for doing better harms anybody.
I understand what you're saying.
And I'm fine with what you're saying. If the RFP doesn't work out, we don't get what the city wants, as far as the bids that are, make sense for the city, then we send it back out with, with the former language.
Yeah, and I would like to not put the stipulation of cal, covered California platinum. I, I just think that makes us look like we're, we're, I don't know, it's, it's already, you know, an extra thing, and then us asserting that we're going to put in writing something that is way beyond most people's reach. I, I just think that, that, I don't, I wouldn't want to see that. But, but some other language to, to say that a good reasonable healthcare option is included, but not covered California.
Well, it's equivalent to. It's not, doesn't have to be called platinum, but equivalent to, so your point is still valid, because if it's equivalent to, it's still higher than what we give our employees. But I think that is apples, apples and oranges, because our, our employees, they're guaranteed work year-round. If I'm in a union, I get paid when I'm on a job. I still need healthcare when I'm not on the job. But if they can figure it out where they can pay platinum or play, pay more than platinum and come within costs to be a responsive bidder, be the low bidder, I, I, the more they give their workers, the better. If it's more than we can do for our workers.
This is an RFP, and when, when people read that, they, they, there's a certain, you know, it just, I don't like that. I don't like putting, you know, the highest level of something on a piece of paper like this that's going to out to all of them contractors.
Okay.
But that's my preference, so you can vote however you wish.
Thank you, Kathy. Let's go to Mayor Lieutenant Vischer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't know if it's clear that the language for the health care and the apprenticeships, the, the language from the, what's proposed by the carpenters will be an, a higher level. So the language that goes out will be as the city proposed for those two items. And then as a bonus, if people comply with the proposed language from the carpenters, that's how they earn points. Nobody will be excluded, because the language from the city will go out for everybody. Do I say this correctly? I don't know how to explain this better.
Yeah, I, I think Kathy agrees. She understands it's a bonus, but she doesn't like the implication, I think, that it makes.
Not even if it's as an, as an option. The, the, the standard is.
The standard is so high that it makes us look a little foolish, I think, you know, because not even we offer that. So I just, I know what you're saying. It's, you're putting down the ideal, but I just think that, that.
It's not a standard. The standard is low bar. The bonus is high bar. It's not a standard.
The, the bonus is, is at a level where not even we would, would need that, and so.
Well, as you know, the health care package we give our employees is part of a package, and we negotiate that every so often. And if they wanted platinum, they would have to give somewhere else probably. So we don't know the history of the labor negotiations. We know our history. Our history is that our employees have the level of healthcare they have out of a long evolution of negotiations. And if you just look at that and say that that's not equal to what is being proposed in the carpenters' union, we'd have to dissect both packages and find out where one might be better than the other. It's not just whether you have platinum healthcare to compare between our two packages. But I, 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 I think you made your point. Do you have any more input, Councilmember Biala?
So I'm just reinforcing again that when we put this language in and we have three ways that, that bonuses can be earned, correct? Is that three?
Apprentice, healthcare, and.
No, I thought you said there is one more.
Oh, the enforcement program.
Enforcement.
Required.
Okay, so that's saying that it, if, if as written like this, because it was conceived of by the unions, that presumably they would have some advantages, and I still really am concerned about the apprentice language, because I think it include, you know, I, 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 I don't want it to be just their program. But let's say that this language is favoring the unions, but the overall issue is that you can have all the bonuses you want. But if the, the, the city says this project is worth this much and you are way exceeding it, then you know that you can't get the bid. That, that's, you know, that's the thing. Okay, great.
It's how it works. That's how it works.
Because, you know, there, there is always this tension and, and the kind of criticisms that, that I hear all the time. And I'd love for you, for the unions to be able to prove this wrong, that you can have competitive bids with all those extra benefits and care for your workers, that's, that's, you know, because I will tell you that it's almost hands down, that's what I hear, is that if you, if you strap other contractors with those fringe benefits, they cannot be competitive. And at the same time, the, the unions are not competitive because you offer all those benefits, and so you don't get as many contracts, let's say. So that's what I'm hearing. That's what I think is sort of out there in terms of, and, and I'm, and we are all in the middle saying we have needs for the city, and that's our priority. And so whatever I feel about, positively about the union, and I have always, by the way, my history, but I also know that the developers are developing things that the city needs, so we have a different perspective on the dais. We have to do what's right for the city. So as long as we can have all kinds of bonuses out here, and as long as everybody is really understanding that it, it all, it all comes right down to competitive bids, and that if this doesn't work, then we go back immediately to, to approving. Automatically, the next bid is what the city has recommended.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Let's go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm really struggling, and quite frankly, it's because it's something I don't stand in your shoes every day, stand in my shoes, and I have my job, and I get quite frankly upset at the benefits that my job does, does or doesn't provide, right? And I understand that, right, because it hits home. I go home every day and I realize that I may not have the benefit that someone else does, and, you know, of course, I want the best for me and my family, and just as I'm sure all of you want the best for you and yours. If it was up to me, right, I would, and I was in your shoes, I'd be asking, you know, for requirements, there has to be a doctor on site and get free healthy meals, right, every day, and pizza and beer at night, whatever it is, right? But the reality is, we're faced with some pretty hard decisions to make sure that these projects are able to be completed, right? Our citizens want these projects that we've been telling them for, as I've said before, since the eighties, forty years, right, that we're going to get a pool. At the same time, I understand the mayor's kind of concept that this is a little bit of an experiment, right? It's, and, and as I asked earlier, it's a, it's a one-project kind of experiment, maybe it works and maybe it doesn't, and hopefully we're not too far behind if it doesn't work. The one question I think I have, just in listening to Councilmember Biala, is that if we were to replace the platinum language with, let's say, gold, one, how big of a, what impact does that have to the worker that bids? And two, does that make any meaningful difference to the companies or contractors that might be able to bid, or does that not really matter? And I'm, and I'm asking for a couple of reasons. One, because I hear from Councilmember Biala that that's very important to you, that it's just the optics of that, among other things. And my understanding would be if we did something like that, obviously the worker could still continue to, to pay that little additional extra, whatever it is, I don't know if it's a little or not, obviously, but would pay the additional extra to get to the platinum level. But if it also, if it doesn't make a meaningful difference in the kind of bids we're going to get, then I, I'm not interested in having that discussion. But I don't know if anyone can speculate on what that change might mean. It's probably pretty hard to do, but if anyone, if any staff member wants to take a stab at it, I'd love to hear an answer.
Can, can we define what, what this platinum level is? Like, is it major medical? Is it drugs? It's, you know, what, what, what are we envisioning? I, I mean, to put one, a, a proprietary, a proprietary name on this doesn't seem right also to me. So if we want to define what the platinum covers, you know, what is the out-of-pocket pay? I don't know. You know, I don't even know.
So before we go to staffing, I, I don't think it's probably good to go and too much of the back and forth, but my understanding is that the platinum level language comes from AB 211. So it's already an existing law for streamlined housing projects. So that's a state law. It doesn't apply to the sports centers, my understanding, because it's not a streamlined housing project. So that kind of standard is already out there, and I think well-understood.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and so then I guess I would just ask staff my original question, which is, if we replaced platinum with gold, does that, one, what impact might that have on the worker for who bids? And two, does that possibly, is it likely to get us a better pool of, of bidders, or is it really negligible and probably just not that material worth, worth kind of arguing over?
Just want to answer that issue. Do you have?
That's, that's my question.
The question was how, how will changing platinum to gold?
Would it change the people that bid, and would it change the price really?
I, I, I think the problem is just when you say platinum or gold, that not every healthcare company has those same names. So, so I think it's maybe a compromise is looking at what the labor union proposed and say that dollar amount.
Yeah, Ishmael, are you aware that it says equivalent to?
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to be called platinum, it's equivalent to.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm aware. I, I think the staff's feeling is a lot like Councilmember Biala is. We don't, we don't get platinum. Lane doesn't get platinum, so we, staff feels it's overkill, but of course, we're here to do the council's will and just provide you with information to give us some direction.
Does prevailing wage require any kind of base medical coverage? Are you aware?
Yeah. No, it does not. It does have a, a component for medical based on the union collective bargaining agreement, but there is no requirement to provide medical. That's up to the contractor to utilize those dollars to purchase medical or put it into a pension, put it into a vacation, or put it into the payroll. However, the contractor and the employee agree.
Tom, could you weigh in on my question? Do you have an opinion on that? Just changing the, the required language from gold to platinum, does that make any meaningful difference in the, the number of potential bidders we would get?
I would be speculating, but I know that for contractors that are signatory with the carpenters, they already need it. So it's not going to change them, their position whatsoever. But for a non-union contractor, not having a higher goal, if it's, it's a, if it's a lower plan, I believe that may encourage some non-union contractors to, to bid. But the problem is comparing apples and oranges between, say, for example, he believes his plan is equal to or better than the gold plan. Who's going to decide that?
Well, and so how do they do it under AB 211, I guess would be my question.
We don't know, because we just haven't seen many projects going out to bid to determine how, how to deal with that. On, I, I negotiate a large number of project labor agreements, PLAs, and we'll have language sometimes that says, if you're, you, Mr. Non-Union Contractor, if your plan is equal to or better than the union's plan, then you can utilize your plan. But that creates a number of issues in trying to compare the two plans, because they're all different. Ishmael's suggestion is that perhaps you look at it in terms of what is the amount contributed to the plan, to the medical plan, as a way to judge it. Maybe more objective.
Okay, I think that answered my questions. Mr. Mayor, I, I see that Mr. Shields is.
Mr. Shields can answer that a little better.
The platinum level, it refers to the covered California platinum level. So it's all defined. Generally, it's two middle-aged adults and then two children, zero to fourteen, covered, and, and then you go into medical land and you lose me. But it's all defined in, in, in covered California, and you could look up what a platinum level is there or a gold level is there. And, and like what was said, gold level will be fine, because our contractors exceed, exceeded every day.
Thank you, Ishmael. Thank you, Brian. Councilmember Vischer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It might be good to, to be very clear about what the motion is. So the motion is to use the city's language.
On prevailing wage, which is identical to the carpenters' language on prevailing wage. That's the first part of the motion.
Yes.
Second part of the motion is as a bonus to use the apprentices', apprenticeship and healthcare language of the carpenters' union. It's in Exhibit A that they provided us, and it's very similar to what we saw on October 21st. That staff report said aligns with our goals, our cost control, local income support, and favorable practices. So, does that answer your question? I'll repeat the motion again, because I know.
But it will be as a bonus.
Yeah, but as a bonus.
So if, if there are any bidders who do not want to comply with this, it will be the city language. So the, the, the bid, the text that will go out will be the city language. But then as a bonus, will include, you can earn points, and then we, of course, we need to determine, or staff needs to determine how the points work.
Right, but the, the city language would be something like, the standard is the lower bar.
Yes.
The bonus is in city language, the higher bar, but it's this language that's going to become the city language with a higher bar.
But just for the other councilmembers, nobody will be excluded, because if, if bidders only, if contractors only want to bid on the lowest standard, they can do that. Yes?
Okay. Councilmember Biala?
I just want to reinforce changing California platinum to gold, because it may encourage non-union bidders as well, because the bar is a little set, and it doesn't impact the union houses, because they already exceed it, so I, I.
Okay, Kathy, if that brings you on board, I'd be happy to make that amendment. Does the gold, does that second hold?
Lower it from platinum to gold? Yes, if that's, so it says, yes.
Okay. All right. So now let's repeat the motion. The first part is the prevailing wage is as in the city Exhibit A of today's staff report, which is identical to the, the carpenters'. Two, if the apprenticeship and healthcare are bonuses, and the text would be as in Exhibit A provided by the carpenters, with the exception that platinum shall be read as gold. And then the third part, I want to ask our city attorney to repeat what he stated earlier as part of the motion.
Sure, and I think here's where I would revert to staff's language, just that an enforcement program be required. So if you're going to, whatever standards you ultimately submit to the city, if they include those bonuses, if they don't include those bonuses and you're just, you know, have the minimum standards, then you're still going to have enforcement program.
Okay, I think that we're trying to get a clearly stated motion for Anita.
Understood. I'm, all I'm saying is that the enforcement program would be in Exhibit, in the staff's Exhibit A.
Okay. And then, lastly, in the motion, that if the city doesn't receive bids to the first RFP that the city wants, then we'll redraft the RFP and send it out a second time.
Except with the city language. We're not just sending it out after we have.
With all, with all language proposed by the city in the city's Exhibit A. If that'll bring you along twice.
Come on, Mr. Mayor, I really object to that kind of comments about, about my, my.
So you're making suggestions to something that if we adopt them, you're still going to vote no?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
That's all that I was saying. I was, we're trying to accommodate all the council members to get a motion that will work. That's what I'm referring to. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. So just a couple of questions.
Thank you. So just a couple of questions. Um, I've, I think I'm on board with your motion. Um, again, struggling because it's something I don't really well understand. I wish I did. I pride myself on understanding issues that we, we all, and when I don't understand, it frustrates me quite frankly. Um, question about the engineer's estimate, that's private, right? Nobody knows what that is except for the city or is is it public?
It, it'll be in our staff reports. So somebody could look up our staff reports if they chose to. Um, I've seen cities release RFPs and, and show what they, what their engineers estimates are. Normally they don't. I, I've seen one city that includes it.
So is it already out though? Is it already public?
No.
No.
Just what's been said in these meetings.
Um, which has been fairly general. It's not been an exact amount.
Yeah, correct.
Again, just trying to kind of understand this process and, um, so it sounds like, I, I mean, the folks know whether they're going to meet our requirements money-wise, right? I mean, like even before we leave here today, like, I mean, is that somewhat, is there any truth to that?
What again?
I mean, it, it sounds like the union, for example, carpenters union knows already before we walk out of the door today, whether their, their contractors are going to be able to meet kind of our bid, our engineers.
Right, that's correct.
Um, okay, that answers my question.
I have a question for staff. Um, if we just go to the city's language on enforcement, which right now that is the motion, will there still be a labor management joint committee that has standing to enforce the ordinance?
So again, this is not an ordinance, so that wouldn't be applicable.
Okay. I'd like to ask Brian why you included this if it's not an ordinance relevance tonight.
Um, uh, if you just replace the word ordinance with contract, uh, then it would be absolutely fine.
So, and then these are not con.
These are not contracts.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, the appropriate verbiage. If you replaced ordinance with the appropriate verbiage, then, uh, then it could very well apply and you would have additional oversight at no cost to the city.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Yeah. I think the point here is that if you have a joint labor management committee, you're more sure to be in, to, to have the law complied.
Yeah. Let, let me ask Tom, but I think my, the answer to that question is even if we included it as part of a contract, I don't know that by the contract, we can grant someone standing to enforce the provisions of the standards in that contract. It's someone other than a party to that contract.
Gotcha.
So this is like where you're enacting an ordinance and so you're granting standing that if you ability of a third party will enforce the provision of the city's, if it was an ordinance, provisions of the ordinance. But again, this is would be language included in a contract. I don't know whether we can grant third party rights to enforce that. And Tom, I don't know if you have anything to add there.
The California Labor Code already gives these types of organizations priority in terms of having access to the certified payroll reports with the name and address of the workers. So in effect, they already have th, th, these types of, uh, powers to review the certified payrolls.
Tom, why do you think? I'm sorry, go ahead, Tom. Please.
And address the issues that Brian raised earlier about misclassification, because now they'll have access to the certified payroll reports and the names and the addresses of the workers. So they can reach out to them.
Tom, why do you think that the the unions would want this language? Given what you just said? Or something similar to it that's appropriate?
I think beyond what the labor code says, they have language here that says they have standing to enforce the ordinance. I'm not quite sure what that means, but let's assume it's to, to enforce this provision. Does that give them a right to file a civil lawsuit against the contractor? I think maybe that's where they're going with the language.
Okay. And just to be clear, so standing, it would be standing, you have the ability to file a lawsuit. So here the contract would be as between the construction manager at risk and the city. Typically there would be, you know, no third party that can enforce those provisions. It would just be the two parties, the city and a construction manager at risk. Were parties to the contract.
Okay. So if the if the names and addresses and payrolls were made available to a third party and they found something wrong, then it would, they would report to DIR and it'd be up to the city, the C Mar or DIR to take action.
That is correct. They, and they have access already by virtue of the labor code to that information.
Okay. All right. So for Shep's, uh, clarity, let's repeat the motion. Uh, adopt the prevailing wage as stated in both exhibits. Adopt the apprenticeship and healthcare uh, paragraphs as stated in Exhibit A provided by the carpenters union. With the sole exception that it say gold instead of platinum. And thirdly, that if the city doesn't receive bids to the first RFP that the city wants, then we'll redraft and send it out with the original Exhibit A from the city. And, uh, Elizabeth, you can say the city, the second holds, and then we can discuss friendly amendments that you might have.
I think when you restated the motion, you forgot to say that the apprenticeships and the healthcare are bonus.
Right.
So the, the language from the city will be used. And in addition to that, the language from the carpenters unit, union will be used as a bonus.
Uh, I think I want to do it again. Prevailing wage as duplicated in both exhibits. Apprenticeship and healthcare language as written in the union Exhibit A as a bonus for those additional.
I think it will be good as written, as written by the city. And then as a bonus, the language.
Yeah, but the city healthcare doesn't read the same.
Then we need to discuss what will be written as the standard. Because we need a standard.
Right. So if you adopt the apprenticeship, so we're done doing the motion, we'll have to come back.
Yeah, sorry. We'll, we'll start over.
The apprenticeship language uh, has a sentence that everyone has to apply, comply with because it's state law. And then it has another piece that's a bonus. So maybe the motion needs to state that.
So, so just to maybe be clear, I think what the easiest thing would be the, 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 it would be city standards plus.
Yes, yes.
But the city standard is encourages each contractor employee. And that's not what I want to say. And I want to say what is said under the apprenticeship paragraph in the union provided Exhibit A. For every apprenticeship craft, go by the state law.
That's the standard. That's the standard. Okay.
That's the standard for everybody, carpenters or not.
And the bonus.
And then the bonus is if you're carpenter related, then you do extra above the standard and you get bonus.
Right.
I just don't know how to say that in a motion because it's a little bit complicated, but we'll work that out. And then in the healthcare, uh, just as said by the, if you can meet this healthcare, then you get the bonus. If you don't, you don't get the bonus.
Uh, yeah, you still have the prevailing wage.
Medical.
Correct.
Component.
Yes.
Right. So that's why I don't want to say city language is a standard. I want to say that the union provided language is a bonus. And if you don't meet it, you don't get the bonus. But you still have to do the healthcare according to prevailing wage law and the rest of the laws on books. Uh, but Elizabeth, you're giving me the.
Okay. No, no, I understand that. No, this is okay. Yeah. Because you can leave it out then because it's in the prevailing rates.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So now I'll speak into the motion very succinctly, that as as to prevailing wage, we'll go by the city language, which is exactly the same as the union language. As to apprenticeship, this first sentence that begins for every apprenticeship, apprenticeship craft and ends with labor code, that is what we're adopting for everyone. And as a bonus, if a bidder complies with the paragraph that starts with additionally, construction contractors, dot, 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 and it ends with provision until project completion, that would be a bonus. Then when you go to healthcare as written in the Exhibit A provided by the unions, that would be a bonus if that could be met by a given bidder. And then if the city doesn't receive the bids it wants and the first RFP, city will redraft the RFP be consistent with the city's Exhibit A language in total.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, you want to comment about?
Wait, wait, we still have a couple of things. So, uh, the, is that clear? Okay. To the city clerk and then to the second or does the second hold?
Let's see it.
Wait, 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 wait. Um, so the second doesn't hold?
Well, if we can add, uh, for the apprenticeship, there's one sentence that's in the city language and that I don't see in the carpenters language, I think. And that's after the labor codes.
Yep.
You stop there. And then the city language also says contractors shall maintain compliance with this provision until project completion. Yeah. So in the other one as well. Okay. Then I, okay. As long as it's in there as the, as the low bar, the standard.
Well, that's a good point because it is the last sentence.
Needs to be.
As our city attorney says, but that's in the bonus paragraph.
Yeah. And it needs to be in the standard. Like the city has, uh.
So that's last sentence needs to be moved up.
Yeah, that's exactly the language from the city.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Good catch.
And then my second holds.
Okay. Does that, can, is that confusing? It's not confusing to Renee. He says it's, it's understood. It just needs to be. Yep. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Biala?
Okay. So, um, in the last, um, point where we're saying that if we don't get adequate bidders, um, uh, to satisfy the city, then we would revert back to the language of the original, um, resolution or resolution today.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit, Exhibit A. But I had talked about the healthcare one on here that says the city encourages and we, and we, we need to do something about that language. So I don't want that to be. I don't want to see this back with encourages. Okay. So however, we kind of.
Okay. I think we can strike, probably strike that sentence because the operative sentence is really the, the second one there.
Yeah. Cause that becomes harder to.
And staff can make that point when they come back to us at that time.
But otherwise I'm fine with it. So as long as we do that, when it reverts back, it won't have that first sentence. And I also have a question. So, you know, we don't know what the point system is. And I don't know whether the actual points that are given to this really make a difference because if they're not, if, if they get significant bonuses on these three, let's say a contractor does. And, um, they have like a hundred points or whatever, you know, we don't, we just don't know what this is going to be. But the, the determining factor will be how close to the, um, this, the, the cap that they come for the project. So that kind of balances out. But I still wonder if the number of points, we have to be careful about exceeding a huge amount so that now it, it appears to be an advantage. So I don't know how the point system works.
Okay. Can we have staff address how point systems might work?
Uh, that's actually one of the things that we want the C Mar to be on board to help us, uh, just, uh, decide for the contractor. The, the C Mar, what, what's going on tonight? The, yeah, but where? Uh, the, the contractor, um, I'm sorry, the C Mar are, it, it actually will be putting out as an RFQ, Quest for Qualifications. So, y, you know, 20 points might be for, um, similar experience. They've done similar projects, um, and 20 points for this, 20 points for that. Yeah. And, and, um, and then the last 20 points could be these, uh, these bonus points. So if a contractor doesn't have these, then the most they'd be able to score would be 80 points, for example. Uh, and so a contractor that meets these would be able to get more than that. So obviously that's the one that we'd be end up selecting.
And, and so, uh, one, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention about all the points, but the, the, the basic meeting of, of the, uh, the cap is, is obviously the first one and probably should have more, the more points allocation, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Um, please keep that, that thought in mind, Ishmael. I want to go to Brian because he's been very patient. Councilman McCarthy, and then come back to you with a question, Ishmael.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, this is more just discussion on the motion. Uh, two items that are concerning to me. One, and this is more general staff direction, like there should be a timeline on this, obviously, right? Like we're, we're trying to get this done, right? I think that's what everyone in this room is trying to do. Um, and then the other one is, um, the language of if we don't get what the city wants, little problematic for me. I can just, I, I think what that means is if we don't get bids within the engineer's estimate, um,
That's correct.
Close or close enough.
Well, but then it gets tricky, right? Like does the staff is put in this awkward position of having to figure out what's close enough and 10%, 1%.
Well, normally if we, if we have a, a low bid that's above the engineer's estimate, staff would come back with a recommendation to, to resolve that.
So the, the C Mar is not selected based on whether or not he can build the project for $42 million. He's selected based on qualifications. And then he works with our architects to make sure that what is designed can be built for, you know, that amount and, and he'll give us a maximum guaranteed price, uh, whi, which could be, he might say maximum price is going to be 45 million. Um, which is within our contingency.
So you're, okay. You're confident that that language of what the city wants, we all are okay with that, is that? And we know what that means, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It means okay, city knows. Anything more, Brian?
No, no.
Thank you. Mayor Bertam Fisher?
Thank you. I also think, don't, I don't think it sounds very professional, but we all understand what it means. I'm just in theory, it could be that we get bids that are all above, you know, our and it could be that the lowest bid is from people who did comply with all the, the bonuses. And then we go back, then we say we, they have to go, well, then they have probably to cut. Yeah. But then we said we go back to the, although it might be that the ones who did comply with all the extra stuff might be the lowest bid in theory.
Then we have no issue, correct?
Yes.
And we.
Yes. So just as a remark, it will be interesting. We're all interested in seeing the bids. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Thank you, everyone. That motion passed unanimously to the four of us present. Thanks to staff. Thanks to all the public that came tonight and last time and the time before that. Uh, have a nice evening, everyone.